So tonight's goal is to talk about, do a little retrospective look at last year's goals. Actually, the goals and outcomes and actions and try to assess where we ended the year. Then also, then take a look at the work that's been done so far for this year and try to come up with measurable goals all within a two-hour period. Or at least have significant work done so that we can then close this out maybe with a follow-up workshop before one of our meetings to finalize that. So our goal tonight is go until about seven o'clock. And so there are really four items for tonight's agenda. The first, and I apologize for the screen by the way, but the screen is actually not adjustable, so there's going to be some cutoffs both on the size as well as on the length, so we'll work through those as much as we can. First is, as I mentioned, review 2015 goals and acknowledge our outcomes. Look at the process outline for this year. Review our group input and then define a goal statement, approve our outcomes, actions, and set metrics to that. So just as a high-level overview, and you were chair last year, so you can provide any clarity, but last year, just to recap, what we had done was that we actually had hired a consulting group, I think it was called Delphi Group. They came in, John and Dana came in, and facilitated two sessions for us in which we came up with this process here. I got some feedback from you about how you wanted to approach it this year somewhat similarly as last year. However, when we sat down with the Delphi Group to see whether or not we really needed them to come in and help us this year, Tom and I thought that one of the growth areas for this council for us is that we should be able to manage that process on our own so that we don't need to hire a consultant every year to facilitate a goal session. So this is kind of our first attempt at doing that, and I'll explain kind of the process that was undertaken and followed very similarly to last year. At the high level, there were three goals, very short statements in those goals, and you'll see it in the presentation. The first goal was to improve internal communications. The second goal was to improve external communications. And the third goal was to further enhance financial management. And what we did is that we identified outcomes and actions for each one of those goals and what we wanted to use as measurement. One of the things that we didn't quite successfully complete last year, which I think that you'll see is where we need to move this year, is that we didn't really have substantive quantifiable metrics that matched up with how we would then agree to measuring whether we were successful or not. There's a couple in here that are quantifiable, so as an example, in this first one for improving internal communications, the one-on-one meetings between councils is an identifiable, quantifiable measure. However, fleshing out norms and practices from the retreat is more qualitative, and there wasn't any action with that. So our goal here is that I'd like to go through, not necessarily every one of these individually, because you can read as well as I can. And by the way, this is being, as you know, this is being taped and it will be shown, the workshop will be shown on cable television as well. Is to go through each of the goals and see at the end if we are comfortable in assessing. I put up here red, yellow, red, yellow, green. We can use any type of metrics that you want, I just picked something that was easiest to understand. And I did not provide definitions around what they are, because I think individually you can do that on your own without necessarily having a consensus within that definition itself. So with that, I'm just going to open, my goal is to really take some notes. We can facilitate, I don't think I need to facilitate this like a normal council meeting because it is a working workshop. So I would like to start off, first, any questions from you about last year, any recall? I know Katie, you're new, but I mean, everybody else was here for last year, anything that you'd like to add from last year for this year? All right. So if we can go, and by the way, this is actually, I've scheduled this review of the past to last no more than an hour. Really, it's going to be maybe 45 minutes, half an hour. So the first goal last year was to improve internal communications, and we had our outcomes and our actions. The question I have to you is how would you either rate this, or do you have any comments regarding the goal that was set? And keep in mind, this exercise is evaluating everything on a council year, which is from November to November.
You're asking, excuse me, so you're asking, you want our opinion on where we feel we stand at this level on this goal?
For last year.
For last year.
Yes.
Not moving forward for now.
Correct. That will be, that will come in the second part of the workshop.
Okay, all right. Yeah, you go first, then I'll go after you.
No, go ahead.
No.
I mean, I was going to say, I think, I think last year, you know, I think it was a great goal. I think it's still kind of a work in progress. I think at times we did really well, I think at other times, you know, there were some real opportunities to improve moments of overall assessment. I probably noticed and I yelled, you know, I think we nailed it sometimes, I think other times we didn't, I think it should be a work in progress and sometimes we still were a good goal.
I would, I would agree with that. I think we really missed the ball a couple times. I think we've all been in situations, I think every single one of us, not for me, for everybody, but I myself have been in situations where I've been caught off-guard last year, where I didn't know something that was happening. That was kind of on my scale, a relatively big deal, and other counselors knew about it, and then for me not to know about it, it's embarrassing. And so I think there has to be, personally, I think this can't leave as our goal, I think we want to wait over this, long way.
By the way, Katie, I did want to mention, if you know, I hope that you contribute to the conversation because you're an outsider looking in, so I'd love to hear how you perceive us communicating internally if you did know anything.
I would know internally, but I could, I could maybe come in externally, but if I won't, but it's really your time to review that stuff again. Good. So thank you.
Any other? I'll add, I'm actually, so I'm a little bit of a linear thinker, so when I look at, and I try to check mark these off as being accomplished, there's very few that can be checked off. However, I'm also, I also understand and we've observed a lot of these actually occurring without necessarily being measured on a regular basis and having some type of track. So as an example, I mean, I looked at communications, I look both internally and externally, I look at what I contribute to the process. I don't really look at you as my colleagues. I look at how I hopefully make it better, and so as you know, I mean, one of the things I took to heart was this one, if you know the issue, and then, you know, I developed my one-on-one coffees with each of you, and that was, you know, not as hard being chair, it was just, you know, try to develop a better relationship with all of you, both working and personally, and I thought that it worked out very well, so I appreciate you guys being flexible and allowing that. I also think that Billy did a great job as our chair, I'm not closed outward, and I think that, I think everyone really did work very well, so I contribute to what I think was a very successful year. So kind of mixing between the green, yellow, I intend to be a little bit green, not quite green.
I think when I look at the outcome, I see mostly green, if for no other purpose. I think that the, you know, the second, third bullet points were really specific to the methodology that was used last year, it was called the final one. I asked everybody in advance, and there was like a survey thing, that's really kind of, I think the goal was to, if there was to be another survey, to have the outcome be closer so that we could get some agreement. I think some of the, some of the other bullet points, I think we did a really good job on, I think we did have robust inclusive discussion around issues, that we did have, not only we strive for, but we have our agreement, which is actually, we can count upon, one hand, and have several figures looked over the number of those, we had the requisite manus. So I mean, I hear the point that some of them we didn't do as well on at times, but I think we did a good job of that, we did some work on it.
Can I submit something else? Ah, you know, I think it's really important tonight to be extremely honest with how we're feeling about certain things. I think that certain groups of us communicate very well and certain groups of us don't communicate very well, and I think that happens in probably most workforces. Unfortunately, we are in the realm of having to, we have to communicate with each other, it's imperative for our talent, whereas some businesses, you know, they can get away with not talking to each other. So I, and like you said, when you phrased it, Sean, it's on me, like, I, I'm talking about myself. I work better or feel more open with certain people because I feel as though I can trust someone with what I'm saying, and I'm not going to get jumped on or I'm not going to get reprimanded for my opinion. There are other people that I don't, I don't have that relationship with yet, but I hope to. So that's why for me, this is such an important goal, because for me personally, those are things I have to work on, because like you said, it starts with ourselves, if we're not willing to go there, then what good does it do?
Was it my goal, but just an observation, having sat with all of you through all of the trials and tribulations, the bullet there, the robust inclusive discussion, I think was really a success that we should be proud of, with hundreds of elected officials and dozens and dozens of groups of them. And last year, as I think back, was one of the more productive events we've done. And that only makes your conversation with your decisions better, but also is an opportunity for the public to understand what you're thinking, why you're going this certain way. And that certainly translates into your second goal and the external piece, using workshops and building, frankly, an exception job, what they're called during discussion on just about any motion that's in front of the council. He would walk and down the council table almost one by one and give everyone our turn often times passed. But prompting folks to, you know, to speak on a topic, I think it's simple, but clearly very effective, and it strongly encouraged you to continue that same practice, I think the process is better for it.
One thing you said to me when I very first started was, you said, and I'll never forget, in our very first meeting, you looked at me and said, "You are to talk to your other counselors at council meetings, you're not here to like," and I'm paraphrasing, "but you're not here to necessarily address the audience, but you're here to talk to," when you're sitting at that table, you want to be looking down the rows of other counselors, because those are the people that you're trying to either win over with your argument or help understand, you know. So I think that's something that I definitely miss sometimes. I get nervous and start thinking that, I forget that what I'm really here to do is talk to.
Well, what comes next is the goal.
Right.
And so you're in discussion, formal discussion, I call it the lost art of having a debate discussion, that's your, that's your opportunity to convince your colleagues of your position, and in external, I'm just a goal, then you want the next item, so don't use that opportunity as goals.
I thought the goals workshop was much more valuable than I had thought it would. I came out of that feeling as if, okay, we're really going to work because of some of the concerns that have been expressed by ourselves and public, civility was really important. And I just thought that everyone stepped up. It was a courtesy that I appreciated because no one got snippy or, and the debate as the year went on, I think as a consequence of people feeling more comfortable that their voice will be heard, they, everyone opened up and talked more and was willing, and it had a degree of informality that allowed for that sort of discussion. That to me was the, the internal communications was around getting people to feel they knew each other, respected each other, and were prepared to come and work together. That was, I think, talking with everybody each, before each meeting was helpful, but probably not, I wouldn't put that as high a action item as just simply coming ready to be good counselors at each meeting, made, I thought made a big difference. As a result, we kind of had virtual unanimity on every matter that came before us. Those are the things that stuck out in my mind. A work in progress, I think internal communications is always going to be probably our number one or number two goal. And you're never going to necessarily stop having it be, because you never want to forget that our ability to work through issues is always going to be better if we have a respect for each other's opinions and reflect on it and think about it and say, "Why isn't that maybe something I should adopt?" Regardless who it is who's putting forth that idea.
So I pretty much concur with what everybody said. I'd like for us to try and make a commitment to revisit this though sometime in the summertime, about midway through the session, because I think we came out of the gate pretty strong, and I just feel like as we went along, we started to kind of lose some of that momentum as we didn't check in, we started doing a little bit more budget, we went through the budget, and then some other issues started coming up. We're going to do the work, obviously, but I think it would be good for us, maybe in the summertime when it's slow, when we're down to one meeting a month or so or something, just set a retreat aside, pick a day, and revisit again midway and say, just the check-in portion, are we doing what we should be doing, where can we do better, how can we, you know, across the board, not just for this one, but. So I think, I think I'd give us, you know, again, a yellow light, I think like most other people, because it is, I agree, it's a work in progress, it's always, it's always something we need to be focused on, but I'd like to see a check back.
If I recall, by the way, we did have a check-in last year halfway through, didn't we? I remember, right, we did pull out this document, the original document, it had, it wasn't a robust hours on end type of discussion, but it was.
We had a workshop.
Was it? It was, was it earlier on?
I thought it was a workshop.
It was earlier than summer.
Yeah.
Because we had a retreat in November, December.
Right.
And so I think May.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did have a check-in.
And yeah, and I recall that, I, like I said, I thought we did good initially coming out, and kind of lost a little steam post the closing out the session.
And I actually, Sean, too, as we think about next year, I do remember, we did have that check-in. And I think we did express, there were some differences of opinions on how we'd done, but we really didn't do anything about it. We didn't really, to get to your point, we kind of all maybe had had different opinions, but we didn't take that next step to say, okay, so what do we want to do, so that'd be a good addition to have that check-in. But then like we're doing tonight, come up with some action steps from that check-in to say, okay, where are we nailing it, where are we not nailing it, what do we need to do? And then Sean, you've got a question for this, for this list, do you intend to carry any of these things forward, or is that part of the process?
So the next section is that what everybody hinted at. There's quite, there's quite a bit of Robert Heather, this duplication from last year or something, yeah.
Because I was just going to say.
It may not, it may not be in the same words, but if you think about what was said there.
Because I just want, for me, what still stands out as a real opportunity is that there are no surprises and trust, so that we all can say what's on our minds and not be able to be judged or whatever, so I guess that's really, really good. I think it picks up from your point, everybody's got some value to contribute, we just need to let them. They may not say it most articulately, or they might not say it in the best way, but we need to hear it.
It's part of being a good listener, and not having, not pre-charged, you know, where it's coming from.
But you know what, that's actually a good point, because when people talk about communications, it's usually about what comes out of your mouth, not about what you're taking in and what you're listening and whether you're being a better listener, because it is about improving the listening skills and sometimes not speaking.
But I do think it's important too to be able to separate, you know, a healthy debate from a personal attack. I mean, I don't think, I personally never felt like I was being, you know, attacked for my own, you know, when people did me raise, that's part of the debate process, and I, that's how I see it. So I think, you know, maybe, perhaps it's, you know, it's always the, you know, what you're sending isn't necessarily what's received either. You know, maybe it's trying to understand each other's style and how we like to receive feedback and how we like to, you know, discuss things. I guess I just feel, you know, when, when there's an issue before the council, I think we can, and I think we demonstrated this several times, we can disagree on points, but if, I think it's still, I felt that it was respectful and courteous and simply got agreed, you know, here's one point and here's another point. So I mean, is the, is the concern coming from a situation like that, or is there a separate, you know, other comments back and forth, like committee or phone calls or something like that, when you're saying about the no surprises and trust kind of thing, or, you know, feeling, feeling like you're being attacked personally or something? You know what I mean?
You know, I think, you know, part of it, you know, and I think you're right, I think everybody's got a different way of listening, a different way of receiving. Sometimes it's contextual, how things are said, maybe a good part of a check-in is to say, geez, how are we getting across in the Bronx, you know, like each one of us kind of somehow, it's working every way, I feel like, whatever it may be, I just think, you know, it's good to touch base, to have those conversations.
Agreed, and I think we also, part of our last year agreement was checking in to pick up the phone and call, if I remember right, to say, you know, listen, so rather than have something built for a while and just get to the summertime and we're like, okay, here's this issue, this issue, this issue that I'm really concerned about, or I didn't appreciate this, you know, I find, and Katie and I had a similar discussion this week, and I find if we're communicating not in text or not in written form, I think we can, is a bigger flow of information and a quicker understanding of where we're coming from. And we may not agree, we may still not agree, but at least we can sit there and go, okay, I understand where you're coming from now, I get it, you know, I, you know, I disagree with it, but I get where you're coming from, you know.
I think that's where some of the trust comes in though, because I think if, for some people, that's a lot harder to do, because they get, they get nervous or apprehensive because they're not sure how it's going to be taken, and we all have things going on outside of this, and there are days where some of us are just like, you know what, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to be on the receiving end of that right today. So I think that's where the trust has to come in, where you're like, that's not going to happen, because I know we can have this discussion and then leave it on the council floor, or leave it on the phone and be fine, you know? So I think that's part of the trust issue that we're having. I don't want to speak, I'm not speaking for you, I'm just saying that's just how I perceive it.
So I'm just taking observation, because I can't speak to your internal communications last year, obviously, but what I'm, what I'm hearing, and trying to be a good listener, is maybe there's a need for two, two check-in points, so that you split the year, so that, because sometimes if you wait till midway, it's, at that point you're already halfway through, you've already got, you know, all of these done, and you don't have time to kind of make corrective actions if there is, so just a thought. And that way you can make it shorter. I know I do that when I'm training, hard training, but.
Simple thing, is it worth talking about communication preferences? You know, some people, do you prefer is phone calls, person, after five, the weekends? I know I'm more receptive that if I know what it's coming, if it happens at the wrong time, not so much, there's maybe a discussion before, everyone probably has a certain different preference.
And I think it depends also on the kind of the gravity of the situation too, I mean, if, you know, for example, I prefer, I prefer a text or a quick text or a phone call, you know, and usually I'm flexible enough where my phone rings all the time anyway, so I don't, I'm not kind of in a window or a box, but I know, you know, other people have different schedules, you're in an office, or something else is going on, and that might not be the right way to do it. And, you know, we, I think we had a similar challenge before with the emails too, right? It's not everybody, I mean, I, I can get it on my phone, not everybody does that, not everybody checks them. So when a communication goes out in an email and we think, okay, if it's time-sensitive or whatever it is, I sent the email out, the time's on it when it went out, but when was it received? And did it warn? Elevating it to that, listen, I need to give you a quick phone call just to check in, or here's a quick text, call me when you get a second or something like that.
I would say if there's anything that's of great nature, which rarely happens, I mean, most of those go to the chair, or the vice chair if the chair's not available. Most critical pieces like that go to Tom and then Sean, and then maybe sometimes.
So maybe what we can do as part of the new task, because communications is obviously going to be another one, we can talk about going forward, how we want, maybe, maybe one of their jobs, one of the tasks that we can send the communications committee is to come up with a protocol, you know, certain level of information will be sent, only by email, a phone call, you know, whatever the circumstances are, that way, because that impacts how staff delivers information.
Absolutely.
And we want their input on, you know, what would be something that they would want to meet, because I'll be honest, last year, I'm doing way better this year, I look at email, town email once a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I must have, that's my bias, you know, I'm reading emails almost real time and responding, you know, as quick as I can, and that's not always the case, I mean, I must freely admit that. That's a problem sometimes.
I'm the poster child on a meme where the, you know, the guy on the other end is going, "I said that five minutes ago and he hasn't responded." I don't respond if I'm un emailed, I don't tell him, because I can't have that on my personal phone for work, so I don't have, that's why I didn't have that before, but maybe we can talk about that part going forward.
Maybe I can just collect your preferences, and I can cheer them back up, so we're just going to have that.
So if I get the consensus, consensus here is that this was probably a yellow on our rating, which is indicative that it's an average outcome, but I think that we can also make a statement that if we emphasize the fifth bullet, the sixth bullet, and the seventh bullet, probably summarizes what I heard from everyone. So more robust inclusive discussion, more respect for differences, which led to progress towards reaching goals. Kind of that's, so in my head, that's a summation of what I heard, that's good with you folks. All right, before we go to the next one, pizza is here, as well as, and I want to thank Nancy for accompanying that. So if you'd like to get up before it gets cold, there's also some beverages over there. So track, we'll move on to goal number two. The second goal is improving external communications. Again, just another slide, you can read most of that for yourself. There are some, obviously, some measurable goals that are kind of embedded in here, that's also a little bit of a duplication with the next, but just metrics. Excuse me, so passing the budget on the first vote is a metric, and we were very positive with that. To some extent, less controversy around council decisions, I believe that was around the budget, I think that was a success as well. We did name a town council quarterback, I believe that person was June Marie last year. We didn't do the articles, but we did do a few of the surveys, the community surveys, I know that we did one for the fireworks, was there another one that we did, or was it just fireworks? But at least we did one.
We did one on communication preferences too, on the public, some at the front end.
Okay.
Yeah, we shared those results.
So there's obviously some measurable goals, measurable metrics that we use in this area, so with that, just in no order, so don't think that you were, you went last time, has to be this one. So where do you think we fell? Red, green, yellow, white, why not?
Why aren't we negative thing to say about this? Well, I'm sure there's a couple things, but, you know, pass, I'm glad we passed the budget on the first vote. I know that we've also talked, it's not up there, but I know that, I don't know if it's just not part of this or something, part of something else, but we also talked about passing a lot of things on the first time, because we would talk, you know, we'd get it out, we'd talk, we'd feel comfortable passing it, but we didn't have a lot of really controversial subjects last year. So that really to me weighs in on a little bit of this. We didn't have to do a ton of external communications because we didn't have a lot of high-profile things that, like, this is January, and we've already been hit with two or three relatively big things that we really need to focus on getting out into the community. So, you know, that's kind of how I feel about that. You know, I think it's always great to pass the budget on the first vote. I don't know if it's always going to be feasible, but it's always nice when it happens, it certainly feels good. I still struggle with transparency a little bit. I think it's better than it was, last year was better than it was the year before, and I found out last year, obviously. The public ownership piece of it, I still struggle with that a little bit too, but I would give it a yellow. I think, I think there's a lot of actions that didn't really happen.
Other comments? No?
I think you're right.
I thought the external communications improved, the e-newsletter, the improved website, getting stuff up on the website so that the public... website, getting stuff up on the website so that the public knew, the publication of all of the financial documents associated with the budget. I thought the budget committee, you know, meeting often and dealing with substantive issues regularly, the public had a tremendous opportunity to understand the budget. And I thought that, that was the most important external communication that you can do is around the budget so that they understand. So I liked, I liked all of that. Sometimes you pass them on first vote, sometimes you don't, but we worked towards that. We had unanimity, I think, on the budget itself at the council level. And that, and I think every single person could have said, I don't agree with this aspect or that aspect of the budget, but that they, we all came together, which was an internal communications and cooperation aspect. But it, I think it sent a very good message to the public that we were working hard to try and put something together that was collaborative and a result of compromises, since none of us got everything that we wanted in that budget. So I was, those are the things that I, I was pleased with as far as external communications.
So I guess from my perspective, I recall sitting behind the table at the budget public hearing and having nobody speak. And I think everybody was kind of fooled with that, not for nor against. Right. So I don't, I don't, it's difficult to gauge what the public's, I mean, there's always going to be somebody who doesn't like or agree with what we do. And there's always going to be somebody who agrees with what we do. I don't think we can strive for 100% satisfaction rating as a governing body. I don't think that's realistic. But I think the level of, in my opinion, it felt last year like the level of discourse and frustration seemed to be a lot lower. It wasn't obliterated by any stretch of the imagination, but it did seem to be a little bit more subdued. And I think, so I think that's a good positive testament to the communication that we had, the external communication we had. I think a lot of that was how we handled deliberations and ourselves during meetings. I think there were a lot less questions, there seemed to be any, and a lot more clarity of what we were doing and why, not necessarily agreeing with it, but seeing where, how our decision-making process was playing out and, you know, why we were doing what we're doing. And almost, almost at some points, over-communicating a little bit, which I think is not an actual word. I don't think you can over-communicate, but, but really going out of our way to really explain, you know, Bill setting it up, here's what this ordinance is about, here's what we're acting on, this is what the impact is going to be, and then having council discussions about what about this, how about that, you know, interactions with staff. I think that was helpful. So I don't know what it's been like in past years in terms of the number of emails and phone calls and stuff. I really didn't receive a whole lot in terms of negative feedback. It wasn't zero, obviously. We all got a couple of, but usually it was a bulk email kind of thing of to all the councillors, if I'm disappointed or upset with this one aspect of it. And I think as somebody typically from the group would respond and, you know, wouldn't necessarily go away, but I think once we've done that, that's part of the communication process is, I think, explaining where we're coming from and what we're doing and why, and not necessarily, I don't think, having to convince everybody to agree with us. I don't know if that's possible. You know, I mean, we do have to make decisions and we have to make the decisions based on the information that we have. So people don't like to hear that when they don't agree with you. But, but I think that we do have to, I think we've done a good job of communicating that and expressing that in terms of, hey, you know, we're, we're listening, we're taking in all kinds of different stuff. So I'd give us probably on external, I'd say, I'd give us a green on that one. Doesn't mean that I think we're over and done and can move on. I think hopefully we build on what we've, what we've started last year. There's a lot more trust, I think, that we can still get. And that comes, I think, with communication. That's what we, that's what our goal was, to bring it up in first place.
I think we communicated that on the issue that's probably number one through 10 is the most important issue of town, is responsible treatment budgets, which came out of the gate saying, we're going to have consistent predictable budgets until the third year. We delivered a budget below 3%. And the years prior to that, it was erratic. And so from a communications point of view, while that reference to 3% or less shows up in the next goal, it was a communication to the public that they had an expectation that we weren't going to live up to that. And we did. And hell or high water, I think that's something we have to do, year in, year out, have manageable predictable budgets. So I think, I put that in the external communication fold.
And sorry, I'm kind of very similar to the first one. I think if I compare the first year on the council, I think, depends how you did your glass half full, glass half empty, from the first year to the second year, huge change. We made huge strides forward. However, I would say, and I really believe it's sort of the continuous improvement process, that we should really look at what we nailed, but really be open about what there's still opportunity. And I, I guess I put ourselves kind of in the yellow again, I think, and especially as you look down at the outcomes that we set, things like understated community needs services and values, community goals for the council based on their input, more transparency. I think those are still things, at least they're still, I think, in some courts are a reception issue.
Yeah.
I mean, certainly, we have had many comments. I think, Kate, your point's very spot on. The budget, I think, and again, personally, I think it kind of follows what we started out of the gate really strong. I think we really did a much different job on the budget. I think that's where we all focused. I think we saw the dividends for that. Then I think after that, you know, we may have kind of lost mojo a little bit. So I just think, I'd like us to take, as we think about goals going forward, we pick off this list, the things that we can still make progress on. So those are the things that I just look to. So I think, I think we're in the yellow. I think we've made a lot of progress, but I think there's still some heavy lifting to it.
I think this is, I think we hit a home run, and I'm definitely in the green, primarily because, and this ties back to the comment, or one of the outcomes from the previous slide on internal goals, and that is about trust. And I believe, if you think about every instance that we actually, on every issue that we dealt with, even though it was somewhat of a slow year, controversial issues, we were engaging. We provide, every time we were opposed with questions, we provided the answers. We provided information. We improved the channels in which we distributed that by creating more concise and succinct location within the website. There were different pieces to that. We did guarantee we didn't do it for every issue, but we did at least start with doing the community survey that we did on fireworks. So I think that we did very well on this. The other piece is that when we talk about the trust, I'm a firm believer is that we need to trust the citizens that elected us. They elected us to make a decision for them. And every election cycle is when they get to evaluate you and determine whether or not you did that job correctly. So I think, personally, when there isn't comment at a budget, I think it's because we're doing our job and doing it right. I'm not saying that every citizen believes that we're hitting a home run, just like we have doubts about the pieces to a budget. We didn't get everything that we wanted. But generally speaking, I do believe that the citizens actually support us and our work. There's always going to be a contingency. You know, what's that rule? One-third that will always agree with you, one-third will always disagree with you. It's about the half that's in the middle because you have that vex that goes over and switches back and forth. And I think that we are hitting a home run in this area. Can we still do more things better? Of course. I mean, maybe one time you didn't get a performance review of work and it was that your boss said that you could do better, even when you hit a home run. Of course you can. So I think that yes, we can do more. You know, some of it is about repetitiveness, you know, things that we do. So the budget forum is becoming a staple that is a great way in which we communicate. And even there, you know, we went from, what, 120 people at the first one to less than 20 last year. So, and then we passed it on the first budget. By the way, I'm not a firm believer that it has to pass on the first budget. The year before, even though it took us three shots, we had to think internally about the breakdown of communications that led to that. It wasn't about the budget, it was about the communications. We did not communicate well with the school board and our peers around that issue. We did not communicate well with the public. So, you know, you have to look at the individual instances that lead out to some of the conflict that's created, and we create that conflict ourselves. And that, by the way, we created that conflict ourselves when it came to that first budget two years ago. So I think we hit a home run.
I just, can I say something?
Of course.
Well, did you want to go first? Because you haven't had a chance to talk.
You might.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Um, I'll...
I'm talking below when I, when I...
I'm not sure I'm going to. One of the goals of, and you haven't had a chance to meet with Tom yet, but one of the goals of the communications group is going to be that, in an ideal world for me, no one is ever going to be able to say in this town that they didn't have access to information, because we're going to nail it in every single facet that we can. So whether that's Facebook, or the newsletter, or emails, or councillors having meetings, or town hall style meetings, whatever it takes for us to reach that is our goal for this year. We're going, and I'm going to tell you that we're going to hit that goal. Now, whether everyone's going to say, you know, we're still going to have, like Sean said, we're never always going to have 100%. People are never going to 100% say, you know, you're, you're on it. But I do firmly believe that we can get to a point where there's going to be absolutely no reason, and I think we're actually almost there, no reason for anybody to not be able to access information that's coming out of this council. I just, I really do. There are so many ways to access information nowadays that there is no, there is no reason for anyone in this town to not be able to access information. So it's my goal and my, my personal goal, and I hope that it will be taken up on my committee, and then I hope the council will help us with that, is to make it, is to tweak a couple of things in a couple of areas and to bring in a couple of new ideas and make it so that we are hitting everybody. And that means from the nursing homes to the schools, all the way down. Because I think there's a misconception in this town that even though we talk about the schools a lot and they are obviously extremely important, we have a very large elderly population in this town. And we're missing the vote with some of them. And some of the reasons why they vote no on the budget is because they don't understand it. And so for me, that's a personal goal, that I want to make sure that that never happens. I don't want to ever have somebody vote no on our school budget because they just don't understand it. So, that, sorry.
Well, but you know what? I think that brings up a great point. And that, part of that is the communication that we're doing now through joint finance. I do know in the past, and I don't know what Julie's methodology is going to be, but I do know in the past, they've taken that budget show on the road and brought it down to Piper Shore and brought it to a couple of other different senior homes and, you know, said, yeah, ask questions, we're here to communicate. I don't know if Julie's going to follow that protocol or not. I would encourage her to do that.
I would hope that that's the case, that we're included in that.
And that's my point, is that would be where the communication resource says, listen, we know you're going to Piper Shores, why don't you bring, why don't you go with them and say, you know, I'm, you know, they're giving the school side of it and, you know, or Peter for finance goes in and says, okay, yeah, that's a big part of it, but here's what we do on the municipal side too.
I mean, my goal is to hit the nursing homes and the schools and everywhere in between, because I think we're, there's that miss there. And I strongly, strongly believe that there are some people that vote no because they don't understand it. And I want to make sure they understand it. Whether that's a yes vote because they understand it, or a no vote because they understand it. I don't care. I just want to make sure they understand it. And not everybody learns or absorbs information the same way. And so while I'm not saying that it's a hand-holding thing and that we need to go out and hand-hold everybody's hand because we can't do that as a town, I just think that there are ways for us to be able to hit that mark just a little bit better. And I think in the end, when we do that, it's going to make us stronger. And it's going to improve our relations with the town, which is something that we're lacking in right now. Sorry, Bill. Sorry.
So I think, I agree with, really agree with Peter's assessment, that we did a really nice job communicating about the budget. But I think that there were other aspects where we didn't do quite as good a job, so we're kind of just inconsistent. And so that's why I put us more in the yellow. And when I look at some of the bullet points that are on here, I think that we did some of them really well, and some of them we didn't even, we didn't address at all. And that's, and then at other times, some of them were more, not too developed, how they would work. But I think that, yeah, we have to improve for them.
One thing that I thought that helped us with external communications was workshops. And it was something important. We just took the extra hour, showed up early. And the other thing was, and I kind of picked up this as the year began and got going, don't ever let a matter come before the council without a good clarification upfront as to what it is, so that more and more, I would ask Tom or Dan to be able to lead before any motion or anything, or a public comment, so that everybody in the room had a good sense. Because there's people on television, they haven't looked at the online materials or anything. They're just sitting there, taking it in.
Yep.
And, and I've watched town council meetings and I go, I don't know what, back in 2011, 12, before I was involved, and I have no clue what they're talking about. But, because there was no sort of introduction. And I think that's very important. Make the public who's watching, whether in person or on TV, make them understand what it is with you.
And I will say that the people that I've spoken to in talking about communications and asking them, doing my own informal survey, and one woman in particular, everything she had to say was negative, 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 except for the workshops. She loved the workshops. She was like, that's where I get the bulk of my information and that's where I understand things. Because when I, same thing you said, when I sit and watch a council meeting, I don't understand what's going on.
Right.
But when you do a workshop, I get it. So everything she, I just want to throw that out because I felt so strongly about it.
Well, cut.
Catch! But I just wanted to make sure that you knew that, that everything she had to say was negative, but it was, she was trying to be, give me some critique, but she did say, I love the workshops.
Yeah. I think we learned some things about what is in effect the means of external communication.
I agree.
So this is the one area where I feel like I could offer some observation from the outside in. The two things I've had in terms of originally all the way that you nailed were the workshops, definitely increased in frequency. And, and I think that's super helpful and people appreciate that. The other thing was, it seemed to me anyway, that there's been a stronger concerted effort to be really mindful of the first reading, public hearing, second reading process, so that there's a longer length of time before something comes to the council and then ultimately that gets approved or denied. And I think that's really helpful regardless of where somebody stands on any issue. And I think it was probably why I was confused last, at our last meeting. But that's a whole other piece. Questions that I would still have around external communications, and this came from just my limited time so far, is, so things like committee minutes, so after, you know, how, who's responsible for posting those and how they get posted. So if someone wants to go look back at, you know, what rules and policies, for example, then I'll just pick on that, not just because it's my committee now and I'm trying to do some back history for myself. Like, none of those are on the website. So yes, I can probably dig into SharePoint and find them somewhere, but they should be available. So that would be an area where I think we can improve.
Just so you know, they are all now. Just so you know, just in case anyone, when they post this, the video online, I just want people to know that they are all there.
Yeah. And I knew, and Tony was going to be working towards that goal. But I'm just saying, if you're looking for an area where someone might poke a hole at you and say, it was better because they want to be able to catch up, that would be an area. And also, some couple of folks have said that they sent emails and they didn't get any response at all. It would be my hope and belief that, and maybe that's what, I don't know what you guys meant by the quarterback, but that every citizen who writes, even if it's just a quick thanks for your inquiry or thanks for whatever, gets some kind of a response. And I don't, what's hard about that, I think, is particularly in that group email format is, you know, we don't want to all respond because that's kind of redundant as well. And maybe that's what, how you guys use G-Murray in that role. But I think it's important because I do think it's not good if somebody doesn't feel... because I do think it's not good if somebody doesn't feel.
I guess, at least I believe, I would call the chair of the communications committee now our quarterback, because that's really, it was her, it was a one-person show in making sure the things got done, that got done, you know, whether it's the newsletter, or, you know, other pieces that kind of went around that. So that has been more formalized. One of the things that I wanted to suggest, although I just lost a train of thought, hold on a second, but we'll be talking. Oh, so some of these items that we've talked about as metrics, if you think about them, they're really not metrics for, I think, for goal setting. They might be better metrics in assessing the value of, and the responsibilities of the chair.
Yeah.
And the reason is because if you like what you have been doing, then I hope that every chairperson, or every person that wants to be chair will take that into consideration when they put their name forward, or are being asked to do that, because the workshops should automatically be a responsibility regardless of your own style, because everyone else is asking for that to be done. And even though we do have changeover on the council, it's usually not dramatic. This, what, every three years is only one cycle, which could lose three. So it really shouldn't have to change. And I'm also a believer that when you are first elected, you really need to kind of come in and feel your way in the sense of, while you are here to make change, you know, it generally won't happen within the first year. And so that's where, while, so if you come in and you don't like the workshops, it might not be the best approach to demand that that change immediately when everyone else in the group has come to that norm, but maybe the following year is when you have another discussion. And not that that's happened, I'm just saying that because of the cycle. So I hope, you know, the workshops, the one-on-ones that I'm doing, you know, I'm also instituting, I call every counselor before the meeting to make sure there's no questions regarding what's on the agenda, offered advice on some things procedurally in advance to kind of make sure that they go smoothly at the meeting, whether it's rubbish rules, or process, or whatever. So I hope that whoever is next does the same thing that Bill started for us. And it should become automatically move in that position, and not, you don't have to have this every year, because it's already been created. So. So if I heard everyone, and I think everyone's spoken, right, unless anybody, I would say that it's, again, another one that's in between a yellow and a green, probably on the higher end of a yellow than it is on the lower end of the green. And if I was to summarize a statement in this particular area, I probably would focus on bullet number two in the outcomes, which is understand community needs, services, and values. Maybe bullet number four, community goals for council based on getting input, so this can go around kind of a survey kind of approach. And then looking at under actions, I would include probably, again, I'm challenging, one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh bullet, seventh and part of the eighth bullet, increase our opportunities for dialogue with the community and increasing interaction. I would probably include the other pieces, because that's individual, but would that be a fair kind of statement to summarize everyone's comments?
I do think, to Katie's point, and I think I was the one who put that up there last year, determine the response protocol for a group email. We've got a one-button click now where they can literally email all of us at once. I think we do need to come up with, and probably I would guess that would be communications. So come up with a good protocol of, at least somebody responds, that even if it's not an answer, it's a thank you, we received your email, we're taking it under advisement, or we'll look into it, or whatever, something.
And if I do respond back with like, if it's like a generalized question, or a question that is easily answered, I do try to send then a blast back to all of you saying, this is how I answered, just so that you're aware of it. The only time I don't do that stuff is if it's someone who's asking for an opinion, or if they're asking, you know, certain specific things.
But I think one-on-one communications is different than a group email that we receive of, hey, councilors, I'm upset by this.
Right.
And if they don't get a response, I think to Katie's point, of course, you know, I would get upset to them, like, you guys don't even care.
But that's definitely something that we can include in our communications. And because Sean actually created a committee, there's three of us, so we can, we'll mash that out, and then get a response, we'll get a response back.
So I just want to add that to the other action, because that's one of the critical.
Yep, so when we talk about, so we'll talk about under the future field. So one of the things that I, so a couple of you have actually brought this up recently about the response issue, and so I'm going to get better at at least sending a thank you, because I don't engage in opinion-based email conversations that are in a group talk. I will respond when it deals with facts, or they want the information that I can verify and direct them in a particular area. If it's a one-on-one conversation, that's different. So as chair, I will at least fulfill the protocols, or if something comes out, then I'd be happy to at least acknowledge, as long as you understand, unless there has been a decision by the council, I will not share a personal opinion. At least I try to.
Well, would you?
I usually delete it before I send it.
I put it in my draft, in my draft.
I know. I know. It saves you.
Is that group email handy? I think my sense is the public likes it.
The public loves it.
They like it, because yeah, somebody's.
The public loves it. It's hard sometimes.
And you're also able to see everything at the same time.
Yeah.
And if you didn't reply all, everyone considered response as well. Could I just offer a couple of comments? From a staff's point of view, the workshops worked wonderfully well. It's an opportunity for us to dig a lot deeper than we can in a formal meeting format. So I'll be looking to work with the chairs I did last year. We'd like to schedule this out over the next couple of months, and a couple of things in queue. We should be able to program that now far enough in advance. So we should be doing as many of those as you can possibly schedule correctly. And there's no end, literally, to the topics that we cover. One other kind of just strategy, and this is something the joint finance committee has adopted, so some of you know this, they have a little check-in at the end of their meetings to say what we learned, of the takeaways. And I bring that up because we are now downplaying social media, it's a brave new role for us, and must have been. It's not intuitive to me. So if there is something that you want either highlighted on our website, or brought up to go through social media, mention it, you know, whether it's your comments or taking a side at the end of the meeting. Let's not assume I take that.
And an email. I sent him, I sent Tom a couple of things. Can you please post this?
Yeah, it's the same. This is the great little shot for social media.
Is there one person who's kind of the chief of that?
Yes.
And that is?
There is, but Melissa is heading that up, but we had decentralized it. I mean, the thing about social media is that if you centralize it, and that could prove all the posts, it becomes a writing halt, it loses its effectiveness.
All in.
Yeah, we're, probably, with Kate, we have, we'd love to share our ultimate gap in place currently, because there's no sense in you duplicating there.
Yeah. That was a, that was a process to get the Facebook stuff going, only because you have to be very careful with, because we are a town, and who has access to it, and what we're going to post, and what we can post. And so it was kind of a process to even get it started. So the staff actually worked really hard on that, and major props to IT and stuff for getting that going.
Is it still Tom, only a one-way portal?
It is for everyone but the police. Police, two-way communication is really important.
Yep.
Assault crimes.
Yep, yep.
With that. The final piece is, and I think Bill uses it to some extent, oftentimes residents take the time to come to council meetings, offer public comment, and ask a question as part of that public comment. And they often leave feeling dissatisfied, because they didn't hear the answer. Some things can't or shouldn't be answered in that form, but many times, I or my staff have that. So I don't want to get into tit-for-tat with someone podium, but through the chair, if that can be an effective way to make sure people have requests and things.
And Bill really started that, and we've done that this year as well.
So I offered that, don't hesitate to do that. Do something that's readily available, and something we can kind of move on from immediately, let's do it.
And the reason I think people have shied away from the past is because you can't get into a debate with the person standing at the podium. So what I always tried to do was let the person finish, sit, and then point to a person, whether it was Dan, or Tom, or whoever, and say, can you respond to that? Because that way, at least, and it brings it to conclusion rather rapidly, which is, I think, what we're intending to do. Give an answer, but don't get into a big dialogue debate.
A tit-for-tat, and you have to appear in court. So let's just all be mindful of that. Some of us are a little sensitive to that subject.
So we are now, now we're in. So we did start a little bit late, so keep that in mind. So I hope, if anything, this third goal, which was to further enhance financial management, I hope that we are all in agreement, to some extent, that this is pretty solidly green for the past year. Personally, I just, I think we did a very, I think we did a very good job, both in the deliberation process, the thoughtfulness that went behind the conversation, and why the budget needed its support, and the amount of money being spent. It was the third year in which we had a sustainable tax increase that was responsible and realistic. Is everyone happy? No. This goes back to that whole, that whole thinking, you know. The only thing that we didn't really accomplish from a task, but we at least started it already for this year, is focusing on the trends and metrics, and how do we then compare ourselves to our neighboring communities or the peer group. So while that might not have been necessarily fully accomplished last year, the finance committee has been very diligent in making sure that we started this year off very quickly with that. So personally, I think this one, if it had a blue, or something even better than green, I would say that we did a great job on this one. I see most heads shaking.
I'd say the proof is in the fact that the budget passed the first round, that's the ultimate test. I mean, I think, again, and I think it's part of the external communication, we communicated very clearly that it wasn't idyllic for everybody, but it was, we did it jointly with the schools, we did it unanimously amongst the council, and I think that carries weight in the community, I do. I think if they see divisiveness, or, I guess divisiveness isn't a good word, but if they see that we're kind of at odds trying to wrestle with what we think is right, it allows them to go, well, if they don't agree, you know, how do we know really what's going on? But I think when we get that full support, I'm not saying we're going to get it in this year, obviously every year's different, but I think having that kind of joint, school, town collaboration thing, I think it helped a lot. And I think it's because we hit all those metrics on the financial management side that allowed us to do that, except for the bottom. Which I agree with, I think that's it.
We should, we should total up the meetings, instructly, you know, around the budget, you met early, you met often, you met open, and, you know, at the end of the process, I have to believe that a lot of members were comfortable that it was a good thorough process, and, you know, agreed with the final outcome, but at least, it wasn't done behind closed doors, it wasn't done in short service, it was done thoroughly.
I think a little, a little noticed aspect of this was, these budgets are, it's not easy to achieve a controlled budget, and especially, what, I don't know how much is of it is the school side, but it needs a lot of it, sort of shared control, but actually we have what I would think is a little less than equally shared control over that, because the school goes through the whole process of developing the budget, and they have 24-month plans, and they work their tail off to get to where they are. And so we're sort of the ultimate decider of what goes to referendum, but that's tough. And so what it requires is, it's easier if we have a really good relationship with the school board. And I think that the budget committee did a terrific job of enhancing that, and I think we all need to recognize that the better our personal relationships are with the school board members, the more they'll have confidence in us, because that's, they, they're kind of apprehensive about, what are we going to do? And so I, I think that's a very important aspect of being able to be successful to actually enhance our financial management, is to have a very good relationship with school board members, so that there's a dialogue, so that if we have tough news to deliver about, there's limitations, because that's really what we do. George, certainly, he had some pretty ambitious budgets. And so we need to be able to arrive at something at the, especially at the starting gate. How many times do we hear that, at the starting gate of budgets, it seemed like it was setting the wrong tone to begin with. And so, but we can't do their job for them. That's their, their job to do the budget. And then we sort of get it, and so.
But I think to your point, though, it's, it's not just trust with the community, it's trust between the two groups, you know? And I think one of our goals in finance is to not be having discussions every year about the annual budget, because it's already been vetted out. We should be arguing and discussing what our three-year or our five-year investment is, you know? Why, you know, that's where the real debate should be, and hopefully the budget is stable and, and, you know, strong enough that, you know, it really becomes a, you know, kind of a, you know, chugging along, and no surprises, and sustainable, and predictable, like that's what it, I think those two words were key for us. So, but I do, sorry, I do, I do think there, you know, we have to, we have to do a job, and I think we're doing it on the finance level, of developing that trust and rapport with the school board as well. And, but I, and I think it comes back, though, to the overall support for the budget, of trusting that they've done the groundwork, and that they've done heavy lifting, and what they've said is, we've identified, these are our issues. And we go, okay, we trust that those are your issues, you know? And, okay, so then how do we support that? Or how, or we know enough to say, agreed, those are issues. Can we do one this year and one next year? Because we've got this other problem on the municipal side, or this other issue on the municipal side we've got to address, and we've got to maintain that limit on where our, that 3% limit, out or below.
I think that's a big problem, though, is that I don't feel comfortable that we've been able to do that, because I feel like anytime we've ever, or personally, and I'm speaking for me, anytime I've ever pushed back, even on a very small scale, it's met with complete resistance and total shutdown. And it's frustrating, because it's not, that's not how I operate, so like, then I get like nervous and anxious, and then the communication is completely shut down. So I actually agree with all of your points, but I also want to add that it's got to come from both sides, you know? And they have to be willing to also come to the table. And we don't, we don't get what we want. I mean, we have been sitting in the same chairs for 14 years, and I know that sounds like a really dumb example, but it's the first thing that popped to my head. And quite frankly, when it comes down to it, would I rather spend the money on our children or our seniors instead of getting us new chairs? Absolutely. But it was just the first thing that I could think of. But it just seems like sometimes there's no bend there. Like, it's this way, and if it's not this way, then it's like, boom, it's like stone cold. And that's just how I feel. And I hope that we're making, I felt last year, that that wasn't, I didn't feel as anxious around that time. You know what I mean? So I'm hoping that maybe where we are making progress, because I really want to see that, because I think that if we can get over that hump, where we could be unstoppable, two committees that are just unstoppable, and can come up with really good budgets for this town. And we have to stop this, this rhetoric of, if you don't vote for the budget, or if you say, can you cut the budget by this, you don't like it. Like, that's, I can't tell you how many times I've heard that. I've been, I mean, I've been, I was like terrorized through email over one, over one vote, you know what I mean? And that's not saying that came from the board, but it's just frustrating, you know? Because in reality, of course, we wouldn't be doing this job if we didn't want good schools, or we didn't want a good library, or we didn't want a good police station, we wouldn't be here. So I'm willing to come to the table, and I just hope that everybody else is too. And I hope that this year goes even better than last year, because last year was the first year I walked away from that budget with the school board and actually felt good. First year. In six.
And I think that's no small part of the joint meetings we've been having on finance, because we have similar discussions, but that's how we develop the trust and rapport.
Yeah. But you guys are having those, we're, if we're not on that, we're not. So how, so what do we do?
We need to get that up, right? We either need to communicate that out better, or we need to find a better way to get everybody engaged to get...
I'd be, and I'd be curious after for, to get your thoughts on, like, how do we make that relationship better? Because I want to be open, I want them to feel comfortable to send me an email and say, hey, what is this or that, or can you help me with this, or, you know, there was just an incident that just happened, you know, and I felt like completely out in the, out in the cold, and I don't know why that is. And so I hope that we can get to a point where that doesn't happen.
Comments?
So just briefly, I think that, that I would, I would put this in the green, I think we need to keep doing, you know, and it's been working really well. Solid.
Katie?
Well, I think you guys, I love America, but I mean, I don't know if the budget I supported, I, I, for the first time, I felt like I was actually also the citizen able to express some concerns without, without feeling like I was going to be judged or reprimanded. And I think for me, that's a super important goal. There are people in our community who are hurting, and even a 3% increase is too much for them. And if you can't hear that, then you're kind of leaving some people out. I'm not saying that you can't help that, you know? But, but they're not saying this hurts me, because they don't care. I mean, it's, there are some people who are that strapped. $50 more a year hurts them, and that's just the truth. So I think we just got to always be mindful and give them the benefit of doubt, too.
And in the school board's defense, their job is to take care of the schools and the kids, but I think people in the town also have to remember, our job is to take care of everybody, including the schools and the kids and everybody else. And I think sometimes people forget that.
So a couple, just an observation and kind of the overall assessment. One is to kind of, to Katie and Kate's point on both ends of the spectrum, no matter what, when the conversation ends and it can no longer be debated, you're going to have people who will sit there and say, you hate kids because you want to cut the budget, and you're going to have people who will sit there and say, you don't appreciate or you hate the elderly, those who are less fortunate or aren't able to pay because you want to increase taxes. Because that's the automatic defense that they go to. And, you know, not to disregard it, but there's a point where, you know, I think that the constituents elect you because of how strong you are, that you can actually make a decision that is truly balanced for the entire community. Because I had not seen, in the, I'm going in my third year of this particular cycle, this has been a very progressive, very balanced town council when it comes to conversations around the budget. Because I wasn't here when they had those big fluctuations two years ago, or three, four years ago, so I didn't live through that, although it is very different today than it was for those who knew I when I was here 15 years ago. Very, very different. So, and I think the reason why it's getting better and needs to continue is because we're also understanding each other's roles and responsibilities better and respecting it. When I say we, it's the town council and the school board. Town council understands and appreciates the role that the school board has, and that it is completely autonomous from the town council and different. And I do think that the school board is becoming more understanding of the difficulties that we have in making the overall budget, and that there's been a better balance, at least this past year, it was a huge, huge difference than the first year. So if I was, I'm definitely agreeing from what everybody says, and if I was to summarize it, I picked under outcomes, bullet number two, three, and four, and then to some extent under actions, bullet number five. So incremental improvement in services delivery, responsible, realistic budget, sustainable tax increases, and really the, on the community budget form piece, it's really more about feedback input and engagement around the budget, the financial management. So there's a statement kind of flowing in there that we'll try to put together. So that gives us exactly a half hour. I'm going to skip this overall, because if I was to quantify the prior conversations, I would suggest that an overall assess, assessment for the year is that we're probably in the high yellow, low green kind of combination, because we did not put any weights to the individual goals, so one did not necessarily have more weight than the other. So I'm looking at it from a quantifying, you know, 33% across the board. So based on what I heard, are you guys all comfortable that that's probably where that is? Okay. So for the next part, you know, just the process for this year. And by the way, thank you for Donald, I think it's really important that you have that, that rearview mirror look into what you've done and accomplished and have input from everybody. So again, this year, we followed somewhat similar process, I simply got input from everybody, asked for five or six different goals that you wanted for the year, and how we can put that together. I am not going to go through the next four slides individually. This presentation is available, will be available online, and you have, have it, and your emails are, well, what I've done here is I've listed everyone's task, or everyone's goal that they sent me. The first two initials, this is all in alphabetical order, please follow the submitter, and they should all be there. And then what I did is I went through each, and I said, okay, what is the key word, what is the motivator or signifier, what I call a signifier within the statement that can kind of tell me what group it really should be kind of in? So, and so this is purely subjective, and it has no input from you, so I apologize, but the goal is to have you kind of take a look at how they all fall into the groupings, and you can either agree, disagree, and we can move around it. Again, this is really going to be just a baseline, you get to determine. So you can see there's some very long statements, some shorter ones, and I went through all of them and then broke it down. So what I found was, to back up, I found a consistency in the, primarily, I believe it's in three categories. The first was communications and relationships. The next was budget and fiscal, financial issues. And the third was governance, policy, and programs. Governance is really capturing things that we do, the procedures that we take, the interactions, how we follow rules and, you know, conduct meetings and pieces like that. Policies are, you know, our own rules and policies, they could be also municipal policies like HR policies. Programs are specific to the program. So as an example, in one of mine, I talk about community television, so that's rooted under that category, because it's a program specific. Went through all of that, and there were two comments that I wanted to mention, that I will need to get some clarification on, that I didn't know where to place. So if you wish to have them, I'd like to, based on the conversation, have the writer, which is Katie and Will, to kind of maybe get, guide me on where to place them, because I just could not figure out what group to put them in. And I wanted to make sure they all got in there, and then we all decide to take out whatever is necessary. So you can go through that. And then what I did is I, this is the kind of, the task outline, I, in the grouping, you have an outcome and action, which is those that you gave me. And then for a measure or metrics is, and I did not presume what you'd want, some of them may already somewhat suggest what that metric should be. And the, and the purpose of this exercise is, one, do we want every one of the tasks that were included? Are there any duplications? And then, two, what is the quantifiable metrics that you want to use, so that at the half year and the full year end, we can look back and say, this was achieved or not achieved? So the question I have, so just to show you the other two, and this is the difficult part, because I had computer problems this weekend with, for some reason, I could not get the email to go out of my house on my iPad to get you this earlier. So we may need to take this offline, or at least take it out of here and have you, give you time to think about it, as well as to think about the metrics. And then what I can do is receive that feedback from you, put it into the kind of the same format, and then come back together with that at a workshop before council meeting, and kind of share where they all fall out. So you'll see on the other pages that actually there's only one, because the fun, the good part was budgets, it was pretty clear, other than some specific programs, most of those outcomes and actions are also, well, quite a few of them are specific, and it really could be the metric itself. So that was actually the easiest one, that it was pretty consistent across the board, particularly focusing on the tax rate increase that being, remaining within our goals for the year. Then there's the specific ones. The others are a little bit, governance and policy, you'll see those there. So then, the goal is, for each one of these core concepts or groups, and looking at them, what type of actual goal statement do you want to reflect all of those, all of those outcomes and actions? So if I go back to, so as an example, we have an abbreviated statement for financial goals for last year. The question I have is, in my personal, and somewhat in a professional recommendation, it seems to me that all three goals last year, except for communications, well, communications is still a goal, it's just that there's other, there's that governance piece by itself that wasn't there last year. So maybe our goals for this year around communication could stay the same. Our goal around financial management could technically stay the same, because it's a very broad statement, and that's what you want for the goal, because you really should be able to carry those over a longer period of time, and then have metrics that simply change because you're trying to drive the goal in a different direction after a couple successful years of completing the task. So the only, the only one that is separated, that's different, was again, it's about governance, policies, and programs. You know, I think that within some of the outcomes, there might be a goal statement. So as an example, you know, there's a couple of references to strategic planning, just some specific actions such as completing the conference and plan update, and some other pieces. So the question I have for you, because we only have 25 minutes, is, does it seem reasonable that we take this as a takeaway, and that we work on that individually, and then have you forward them to me, and then I can kind of bring this information together like I did here at a workshop, in which we then can set up metrics? Does that sound okay?
It's only way I think you're going to get real good feedback, because I can't, just quickly kind of sort of ball that.
Yeah, I just, we need more time to go through it. I started going through it, I was telling Tom earlier, my eyes started crossing.
Yeah, me too.
You know? Because these were not just the, my thoughts, they were seven people's thoughts, and so I had to sort of decipher, what do they mean by that?
Yeah, I agree.
And you actually should have a little process, I think, reflecting back on last year and how we did it. Once, once we got to this point where you, you organize them around governance, policy, I think we got some type of process where, instead of having all 10 items or every item there are, each one of us vote for what would be as the top three, two or three. So I wrote that would be a worthwhile exercise, to try to boil this down, then once you get the top two or three, then, then it's easier to write sort of a, a goal statement or something. So I don't know.
So what I can do, and actually you can do this on your own, I don't need to resend this out, because you should already have it in your email, by the way. When you go through, if you identify and only offer a metrics, that is to one of the top three items that you want in each one of those?
Does it not just slide the top three items?
Yep. So only answer the question about a successful measure or metrics on the top three items that you wish us to include. I'll look for the commonalities, and if there's multiple definitions or metrics, then I'll at least in the graph, I'll bring them both, so that you can then see, because they, you might get, might be getting to the same point, it's just a different methodology.
So walk me through exactly what you're looking for, then. So let's say I pick for top one, I pick prioritize needs. What am I writing in the success measure metrics? I would say prioritize needs means I want a top three list at the end of every meeting?
Yes.
That's what I mean, that's what you're asking for?
Yes. And because you answered that, that means it's one of your priorities.
Gotcha.
If you, so I'm asking for each one, maybe three of your top outcomes in each of the...
Each of the core areas?
In each of the core areas. It doesn't necessarily, you don't need to rank one of them, because we can talk about that at the session. But, you know, so as an example, so totally increase of tax zero to 3%. So that needs to be somewhat specific. We've always used it, you know, one, because it's a, there is a significant difference between a zero tax increase and a 3% tax increase. And that is, needs to be defined more definitively because of the Finance Committee's work in order to be able to then to record managers, to be able to put a budget together. See what I'm saying? So you can't, you can't say, well, anything, it's like, I want a reasonable budget. How on earth do you measure, how do you, how do you measure that? So it's relative. Some of the, yes, relative. So you need to be specific in some of these, and it needs to be something that we can measure, and that we can either collect data or provide some type of output.
But it strikes me, total tax increase of less than or equal to 3%. That is the success measure and metrics, isn't it?
Yes. That, in that particular case, the, the outcome is, I would say, is the actual metrics.
Okay.
I'm pleased to hear you say this, because I've worked with councils in the past where you come up with a laundry list of things, and I can tell you from experience, it's kind of overwhelming, you know? There's just so much there, you can't possibly make that way almost at all. So doing a handful of things and doing it well, I think last year is a great example, doing that, really focusing on a couple of really important principles and keeping focus going here.
So the other piece, too, and I...
Sorry, but just a question, like, so I get what I need to do for the pieces that I added, but wouldn't part of this, or wouldn't it be helpful also to kind of weigh in on one other, like Chris might have wrote something I think is fantastic, or is that going to be...
That's going to be included, so everybody's three will be identified.
Right, but what if I like one of Chris's, and it's not in his top three, but it's in mine, you know what I mean? Like I might, like his, he, for him, it might be, oh, this is only my fourth favorite.
Well, but if you put...
But I'm only, you can't, I mean, you had mine, I thought.
No.
No, okay.
Oh, you picked, picked the best one.
Top three, all around.
Yeah, you have it, yeah, top three, doesn't matter.
I thought, I thought...
That's why if you look on this page...
I thought you said mine, yeah.
Nope, but if you look on this page, there are no identifiers.
Perfect.
So it's whichever one you...
Oh, yeah, but I know which one's mine.
So you might have both an indication of which ones ended up being preferred...
Yes.
...by the number of people.
Right.
Yes.
You might have total tax increase less than 3%, that might have seven, that's seven, actually, seven people.
I'll change the, for the next meeting, I will change this, so that you'll also have a, a count, kind of a count more...
So I'm going to store it there.
I'm clear now, I thought you said specifically, you thought it only come on my heart.
So think about this also, by the way, because there's value in having it as goals, but you need to be able to identify the metrics. So when you have an open government that practices transparency, you need to think about what you find is an acceptable metrics.
How do you measure that?
How do you measure that? Because part, to direct it towards Tom, is that Tom, here are the council goals. By the way, the next conversation is about, here's the way, he then is supposed to then take the, take that and say, yes, I have the resources, no, I don't, if I don't, how am I going to pay for or find them? And come back to us, so that we can either change our goals, or redefine it, so that based upon whatever resources he does have. So that's not overburdening.
Well, keep in mind, this, this comes up to me funny, but these are your goals, they aren't necessarily mine.
Okay.
Except that, I'm here to help support you in meeting your goals, so I appreciate, there's a practicality as part of this, but there's also things that are incumbent on you to do. Transparency in your operations is as much your responsibility as mine. I can ensure that you, you kept a prompt meeting notice, that it's televised, I can do those sorts of things.
Right.
More of it's on you than me.
Yeah. However, restructuring, restructuring HR policies, compensation, planning, is critically dependent upon you and your resources. Right.
So with that, it's John, before you move on.
Yep.
So something we've done in the past is we kind of have had like value statements, as in, like, we like affordable housing, we like preservation of historic buildings. Is there going to be a room for that to kind of include some of the things that we think are important but may not rise to the level of those things that we want to measure?
Yeah, and actually, I did include it, so last year, on the very last page, there were like eight items. Yeah, the coordinators and other issues. So I can include that as part of it.
Great.
Yeah. So like last year, we had historic preservation of affordable housing, senior services, strategic planning, so, so yeah, I can include that for sure, yeah. So the other piece to this, so we're going to go through this part of the process. The question also then is, is to really place weights to each of the goals that you set, because that should drive, both from a leadership perspective, but also from our own work, work, drive which ones that we try to accomplish first. So as an example, and I didn't put any one in particular, you know, is budget the most important, and therefore it's going to be measured 50%? Now, keep in mind, they could all be 33 and a third percent, 33.167, whatever the number, yeah, you know, based on that kind of perspective. What is the most important of the three goals?
So write, pick the top three, write a metric, and then assign a weight.
Yeah, but only to the overall, not the individual piece? The core piece, so it's communications...
Gotcha.
Were 30, 50, 20, 10, 10, 80, 10, I mean...
So if you thought that all three had equal importance...
Yes.
You'd give a third, a third, a third.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Because that is, it can be hard to... Because that is, it can be hard to say what the weight is.
Yeah. But because, but think about this. Um, so a lot, um, and the reason is that, um, this is what should change from year to year in your goal setting. If you set good goals, the goals will stay the same every year. Your metrics will change on how you achieve it. And then you change the, the, the weight because you've achieved what you've been, so, you, you've achieved what you've been trying to achieve. So, if budget, if we hit another home run in the fourth year, does that really need to have 50% of our attention if we've got it down-packed? Maybe we switch and put communications as 50% because we feel that that actually leads the attention more than budgeting. So.
Some of the things, uh, I didn't actually understand what people meant. So the metrics, forcing people to put down some indicator of what, what, in specific terms, you tried to achieve, would help me, and maybe I would change my mind about what I thought was the top priorities, once I saw that. So maybe that's when we come back together, we'll see that. We'll have the ones that have the highest priority, but those that felt just shy will still be on the table in the sense of, now, gee, maybe we appreciate it.
And, and what I'll do on this one here is actually, um, for that next meeting, is that I'll show everyone's layout, um, and see if there's any pattern. Because, because you can drive a, uh, a little pattern from that. Um, and then, whoa, oh, what'd I do? And last, um, it's really identifying the sources.
I just wanted to show how much you said.
So, so, that's a funny story. So these are really, I, you know, I'm talking with Tom, you know, what are the resources? The only reason why I put me up there is because, you know, being in a chair, there's a lot of, uh, um, communication that goes through the chair, a lot of, uh, goal setting. Um, and Mary titled, "Lords," because believe it or not, I could not find, um, I think of all things memorable about strong women, um, is I could not get a picture of Jackie.
That's funny.
Is this a model?
She works very good with that.
No, there is none. That's how I sold all the other ones, was from the websites. So, uh, but, it's really, it's really the quote, coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, working together is success. And if you think about it, um, we've, we're now getting to that working together is successful. And we're achieving what we're, what we want. And then last, this is just a, you know, uh, we started off the conversation with this, um, the issue of individual contribution, and it really should end also because it's about what we give to the process and how much we are engaged. Because if we're not engaged, and if we're not contributing, then, um, what do they say? Garbage in is garbage out? You know, so if you're not contributing to the process, um, then you're not gonna get an outcome that you might appreciate because you weren't heard, you weren't part of that. And so, the only way that we can all be part of that is to participate and be open to everyone's, um, input. And, and I think we're doing, we're doing a better job at that, than what we did. And for me, that is the last slide, with 10 minutes to go. Comments? For me, um, what I need to do to make you happier for the next round? Um, anything I can do, not do?
I need that presentation again because it's not coming through.
Absolutely. Yeah. What I probably will do, if you don't mind, is that I'm actually gonna go home and, um, um, update the red, blue, and green buttons. So, um, based on our outcome conversations and the statements that we had, but you'll have it by tomorrow.
And then if you can.
That is on the website.
Yeah.
I can send it.
Oh, okay.
Or I will be here afterwards, because I'm, yeah, thank you.
Other than that, any?
Any of that, where you want this stuff back?
So, it's on. Um, I mean, if you can get it to, next week is an off week because we have constant listening, right? Trying to look at it. Uh, so maybe next week, if you can give me your responses by next week, and then I can, right now, our workshops are kind of full.
Why?
Uh, if you can get it to me by Wednesday at 7:00 P.M.
Next Wednesday.
See, I like very specific.